Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's special city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kasarag?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I would kindly ask our distinguished officer, Officer Parisi, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have one item tonight at the special city council meeting. Item 2A, B, C, and D, of course, are all related. Item 2A is to consider ordinance number 2024-22, annexing parcel number 12-12-300-071 to the city of Geneva. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Pashke, Bowring. No, Pashke first, Bowring second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
This matter is on the floor for discussion. Prior to that discussion, I want to ask our city attorney to explain to all of us...
The votes.
Oh, forgive me. I'm sorry, it's on the floor. Forgive me, no vote. To explain to the council and to the community, those present and those tuning in, why this is a, as I defined it in correspondence with some of you, a simple annexation and not an annexation agreement which requires a public hearing. So with that, city attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. The distinction is rather simple. It's the absence of an agreement with the developer. So an annexation agreement requires a public hearing, then a vote. In the absence of an agreement, a straight, simple annexation is straight vote. There's no public hearing associated with it. That's per the Illinois municipal code.
Very good. Stephanie?
So with the pleasure of the council, I'm just going to give a brief overview of all four items that are under consideration this evening. So there are four actions for consideration regarding the proposed project site consisting of one parcel totaling approximately 55 acres of undeveloped farmland in unincorporated Kane County, generally located east of Kirk Road between Old Kirk Road to the north and Fabian Parkway to the south. The applicant Venture One Acquisitions LLC is seeking to annex the property into the city to develop the site as a speculative industrial facility for one or two prospective tenants in alignment with the city's I-1 light industrial zoning district. The proposed development would include one industrial building with two access points, a signalized intersection located off of Kirk Road across from the entrance to the Fox Valley Ice Arena, and access located off of Dawn Boulevard at the south end of the site. So this evening, the applicant is seeking approval of four requests. The first is annexation. The second is a comprehensive plan amendment. The third is a zoning map amendment, and the fourth is a site plan approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing for the applicant's request at their May 9th meeting and recommended denial of the comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, and site plan with a vote of four to one. It should be noted, the Planning and Zoning Commission does not provide recommendations on annexation requests. If you have additional questions, we do have Director DeGroot with us this evening, and also we have representatives from Venture One.
With that, we'll open it up to the council. Anyone on the council wish to begin with either questions of the applicant or questions of Mr. DeGroot, our community development director? Hearing none?
Are you talking about just the annexation?
We're just talking strictly the annexation, exactly. Very well. With that, we have a motion by Pashke. We have a second by Bowring to approve ordinance 2024-22, annexing parcel 12-12-300-071 to the city of Geneva. Please keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this is the precipitating and prevailing action this evening. If this action passes, we consider the other items. If this action fails, no other items are to be considered. With that, city clerk?
Pashke.
Please take the roll. Excuse me.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kasarag?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
And I vote as well. I vote aye. With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent, item 2A has been approved by this council. We jump to item 2B, consider ordinance number 2024-23, granting a comprehensive plan amendment for parcel number 12-12-300-071 from commercial to industrial. Motion by Bowring, second by Marx. Steph, oh, excuse me. Ms. Dawkins has provided her preamble as part and parcel to her earlier statement. The floor is open for the council for questions to Community Development Director DeGroot and/or the applicant, our friends at Venture Park. Bruno, then Kasarag.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm going to be listening to arguments tonight, but speaking with staff, you know, finding any expertise I can, I envisioned, I would have really hoped that we'd have something a little more broadly appealing here, but I just don't see this parcel attracting the commercial or mixed use that we might like. So unless I hear arguments otherwise, I'm for this plan amendment.
Alderperson Kasarag?
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if Director DeGroot might give us just a little history of maybe why this was marked as commercial, what the idea was when that plan started, and I guess that would lead into where we are tonight.
Director DeGroot?
So this plan, the southeast master plan, was adopted by the city in 2012. And at that time, there were plans to really improve the Settlers Hill area with an amphitheater, a hotel, other recreational uses, and the idea was this site could support those commercial uses as well as the Cougar Stadium and the Ice Arena. But that development has not occurred since that time, so...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais regarding item 2B, as in boy? Forgive me. Alderperson Swanson?
Thank you, Mayor. If we were to approve this change, what would remain in the southeast master plan that would be zoned commercial? Because it was mentioned in the southeast master plan that this would be either for to tie into the sports complex across Kirk or to service the employees eventually who would be working in this master plan. So what will be left if we change this?
Director DeGroot?
Probably easiest if I pull up a visual aid here. If I can get it over.
David, do you need a pointer?
I'm not sure that I will.
Okay. You can use the mouse as well, so...
I can't seem to navigate this. Okay, so I've got to get the mouse over there.
Marissa, want to provide some assistance?
There it is.
All right.
It was just not...
I can't see the mouse.
Yeah. It was hit.
I'm sorry, this is really difficult. So there's the land use plan. This is the BEI site, so if this were to go industrial, you would be left with the corner where you have the Country House Restaurant and the hotel and office buildings as commercial, and then some additional mixed use along Route 38 for an inch.
Okay. So either built out or north of the tracks?
Correct.
In the finding of fact for to approve this change, it said it does not align with the vision for future uses, but kind of fell on transportation goals. And basically, we will get a signalized intersection on Kirk Road at the Fox Valley Ice Arena, and because of that, we should do this. However, if you go back to the SEP report, they talk about a signalized intersection creating two highly visible corner lots, 24 acres each, with strong commercial potential. So yes, it was a goal of having a signalized intersection there. However, it was also stated that that would create a more viable commercial property. So here, we're taking a piece of it and saying, we're going to take the commercialized or the signalized intersection. However, we don't care anymore about having a commercial piece to this entire plan. So was that considered in the finding of fact?
I think both factors were considered. I think what is not being, I think, included in that summary is the change in time and the demand for commercial today as compared to 10 years ago when the plan was created.
Okay. I get that. I guess I look at the sports area as kind of unique in the suburbs, having a ballpark, ice arena, golf course, something we could capitalize on. And I also see the southeast master plan moving forward with completely 100% industrial usage and no commercial to speak of other than the mixed use up at 38. So I think I support continuing calling that for commercial use. I don't see making it all industrial. I think that commercial area kind of added a little buffer to the residential that's staying. So I think it's premature to say, oh, there was nothing we could do, nothing's happened, it's got to be industrial. I think it's too early to do that. I think the southeast master plan had bigger visions for multiple diversity in that area, so I will not support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Alderperson Ruby?
Thank you. David, this is probably for you, too. I'm just curious, can you give us a summary of the pros and cons of adding a stoplight? Because I am familiar with more negatives than positives about having a stoplight there as far as the flow of traffic.
I mean, the applicant's traffic engineer is also here. He'll probably answer that in better fashion than I can. But I mean, the pros are to maintain the level of service at the surrounding intersections as well. So the increased traffic that this site would generate by adding that signal, you're not putting additional pressure on the existing intersection at Fabian and Kirk or 38 and Kirk. You're maintaining those levels of service not only at this site, but at the surrounding intersections.
Okay. But we're also adding another stopping point on Kirk with a new light with the heavy semi-traffic, the starting and stopping?
I mean, there would be an additional signal there. That signal could also relieve traffic pressure from the Fox Valley Ice Arena, from the Cougar Stadium, when they have events.
Okay. Are you able to comment on the environmental or the pollution or the noise or any of the complaints that residents have when, over the trucks, the semis stop stopping with the braking and having to start up again?
Not really, no.
Okay. That's fine. I didn't know if that was in your area. Okay. Thanks.
Do you have anything you want to do?
Of course. Yeah, we invite you to the podium, and please just share with us your name, and if your last name requires spelling, please be kind and do so as well.
Yeah. Andrew Bowen, B-O-W-E-N, with K-L-O-A Inc.
Mark Good, Principal with Venture One Real Estate.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure. Adding a traffic signal would add another point where people stop, but the big thing to consider is that this would be an actuated signal, and it would give almost all of the green time to the through traffic. It would stop pretty irregularly. This is partially because it's going to be coordinated with the Kirk and Fabian signal, which has a pretty long cycle length. And since the development itself won't generate that much traffic, it only needs a small percent of that cycle to get it to get all of the traffic out. So a majority of the time, like 90% of the time, it's going to be letting through traffic go through, so it'll have a very small impact on that. And like I said, these intersections are coordinated, so the way they're programmed will allow for vehicles to continue in a platoon through both signals. And then the benefit would be that these developments on the west side that may have issues exiting today would have a place where they can exit more easily.
And safely.
And safely.
I'm not a traffic engineer, but I do want to point out one thing that came up earlier in the, for the southwest master plan. Do you mind if I address one point?
Yes, sir.
That was made?
Please do.
Any of my glasses? In the actual plan that was actually prepared, there is a section that reads as follows. "It should be noted that some of the commercial southeast area noted in red on the primary plan shown to the right, which is our site, may be best suited for light industrial land use as an extension of the land uses to the south and east. But for sake of naming, it has been labeled commercial." So buried in the actual plan was the initial thought being industrial, ink or commercial, but why they chose just to say "commercial," I think it was because they didn't want to use extra ink for industrial also or something. But it does state in there that it could be either or, but they just listed it "commercial" and didn't list it as both. So I just wanted to point that out about the actual plan.
Alderperson Ruby still has the floor.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Alderperson Pashke?
In listening to the commission meetings, I just wanted to mention that, a reminder that Kirk is a county road, and we can't just install a signal without meeting that need. So talking about saying, let's install a signal and then develop "commercial" is, that's not possible. It doesn't work that way, right? The other major consideration right now is that commercial's not booming. Not only does this plan call out that light industrial might be the best use for this, but we just had a major commercial site in our city sell for dramatically less than it did years ago, and there's no demand for commercial right now. So it would be, I think, short-sighted to say, let's leave this the way it is. I think I support changing it.
Yeah. King County's in support of this signal already.
Correct.
So just want to make that clear.
Alderperson Bowring?
So I guess just to come out, I'm also in favor of making this amendment. I think that the master plan is a great starting point as a planning document. I think it also, whether you want to call it a, including some flexibility or perhaps even being a bit confusing at times because it does refer to this area in a few different ways at different points. This particular image has one part marked out as industrial slash commercial, but when they call this out, they're really not clear. But I guess I see it as a starting point and one that should be taken seriously, but also not something that's completely set in stone. And I think as I look at this and I consider whether or not it makes sense to change this plan, you know, I'm thinking about the city's long-term goals, and I'm thinking about market demand, and I'm thinking about private property rights. So I want to try to balance those with interest in the community that has been stated for a commercial use. I think unfortunately, at this point, we do not have indications that there is a market demand for that. Also, looking at this particular map, it looks like the signal that's drawn there is also connected to a road that was contemplated at the time that I don't think is any longer contemplated. Is that correct?
The, I'm sorry?
Sorry. The signal that would be across from the Ice Arena is connected to a road which would pass between parcels 10 and 11, I think. Sorry, I can't read this from here, so I'm going from memory. But I think that that road is no longer contemplated. Are you able to speak to that, David?
That's correct. There is an east-west road through the Midwest industrial site, but it ends at the property line. It does not connect through to this property.
And then again, I don't need to belabor this. David's already gone over it, and it was in the staff report, and it was in the presentation by staff. But a number of things have changed in the intervening years, not just market conditions. There's land on the Kane County side that was initially marked out as likely to have commercial or other uses, and that's been rezoned as industrial and developed that way. So I think we need to be mindful of, you know, what makes sense at this point in time. And given that, I'm in support of amending the SEP. Thank you.
Alderperson Mayor, then Alderperson Kilburg?
I also support amending the SEP master plan. I think last time, as Councilperson Maladra indicated, we had talked about how to change the wording or how to deal with what people don't like about the light industrial, and we couldn't come to any agreement about that. This plan wouldn't be my first choice either for the site. I think similar to Alderperson Bruno, I wish it would go commercial, but it has been marketed for quite some time, and no takers at all, no interest even to go with a commercial party. And I've spent a lot of time looking at the plans, and I, in general, think that this is a huge building, there's no doubt, and it's going to be visible from some angles. But as I drive around the area and specifically come down Fabian or come down 38, this is very in keeping with what's already built. And there's some that look great, there's some that look okay, there's some that will go away, and there's some that are a little too big, too shocking. But this one is going to be up above the roadway with a lot of trees in front of it. They do grow. It will grow in to be a pretty good-looking site, I think, after all said and done. There are power lines going down the road right in front of it, so that's not going to look good ever. Maybe part of the reason why "commercial" wouldn't be very possible here. But I think that this is a really good development for the city, and the neighborhood around it's not, I don't think, going to be impacted. I spent some time at Rook's seeing a band play, which was really great. I think that they have a great venue there, and you can't see the cars from Rook's outdoor patio on Kirk. You can see the tops of the trucks, but it's a really pleasant venue, and you hardly notice the noise from the roadway. I went into the neighborhood that's adjacent, and it's also a very pleasant neighborhood that you don't really hear the noise of the expressway any more than, or the roadway any more than I hear 38 from my house and people hear Randall from their houses. It's a constant white noise background and sometimes punctuated with people who don't have good mufflers. I just really think that this is going to be much ado about nothing, and everybody will be okay with it in 10 years. So I'm supportive of this change. Thank you.
Alderperson Kilburg?
The Planning and Zoning Commission voted this down on two occasions, these three pieces. Could you give us a little bit of an overview as to why this advisory board felt that this was not the time and the place to proceed? And any recommendations that they might have passed along for any of those people that may not have watched the Planning and Zoning Commission back in May?
Sure.
When this meeting was held?
So at this last meeting, we had commissioners express similar concerns that Alderman Swanson expressed, that with the Midwest industrial site going industrial, maybe there is a potential for a commercial at this site, maybe not today. They recognize there might not be potential today, but they weren't convinced that going industrial at this...
You speak up a little bit.
Sure. They weren't convinced that going industrial at this time was the right move to make, that there might be potential for commercial in the future. And that it is one of our remaining greenfield opportunities in the city, and if we're committing so many acres to industrial, that maybe we should consider other uses for this site.
Last week, we approved, how many acres for industrial development?
211.
Okay. And this would be another 59 acres, approximately?
Fifty-seven, I think, and some change.
Okay. As you look at our Planning and Zoning Commission, do you feel as though they did their due diligence in preparation for this hearing?
Yes, I think we have a strong commission. They always do a good and thorough job.
And what was the vote in that?
It was one in favor and four opposed.
Okay. And then this was, there was action taken on this some time ago, I believe, last year. And at that time, what was the findings of the Planning and Zoning Commission at that time?
It was three in favor and four opposed at that time.
Okay. So it was essentially, the recommendation to the council was not to approve it.
Correct.
As we look at this, we talk about now is the time to move forward with industrial, additional industrial development in the community. I believe it was roughly three and a half years ago, we were dealing with the large parcel just north of this along Kirk Road, and that there was an effort to annex and develop that parcel at that time. And over a period of time, and with a good deal of discussion and exchange with the community, the developer decided to withdraw their application, if I'm correct on that.
They did withdraw, correct.
Right. And at that time, the parcel was not annexed, correct?
Right.
Right. And then approximately a year and a half later, then we had another developer that came to Geneva that had a different idea for that property, right? And could you tell us a little bit about that party?
Point of order, is that on topic? Or is it...
I understand what Alderperson Kilburg's doing. I do, and I respect it. I don't know if it's Germaine, city attorney, what would your ruling be? I don't want to talk about the Bullock campus.
I'm not talking about the Bullock campus.
I think you just asked Mr. DeGroot to provide a history regarding the "no on Amazon" but the "yes on Bullock," correct?
I didn't say "Amazon."
Well, you're talking about the property north that is the Bullock campus.
Right.
Okay, yeah. I would rule that to be not Germaine. But I understand the position you're taking, and by all means, the floor is back to you, but...
Then, okay, we had, then what contributed to the annexation of that property, then the further annexation to the east of that parcel?
I guess I'm not fully understanding the question, and...
In other words, what contributed to the development of the property between Kautz and Kirk?
Again, I...
Okay. Was there industrial development between Kautz and Kirk that was approved?
Yes. I mean, we had the Hillwood development approved and annexed. That was about 80 acres, and then the Bullock campus was another 50.
And how much square footage was involved with the construction of those facilities? And are there additional plans for additional construction of industrial in that parcel?
Yes. So the Hillwood site still has potential for one additional building or two additional buildings. And the Bullock campus has not started construction yet.
Just as a summary of essentially unoccupied... Just as a summary of essentially unoccupied, or, okay, newer distribution, in the immediate area, we have the Fox Valley Commercial Center, is that correct, Building One? Fox Valley Commercial Center, Building Two, in the immediate area?
Right.
JLL Prologus?
On Route 38?
On Route 38. Duquesne Business Center? And that was, there's two buildings, right? One would be on Route 38, and the other would be the Stag Building, is that correct?
I don't have all that information in front of me, but generally, there's vacancies in the area.
Anyhow, it seems like there's a lot of industrial, a lot of, particularly warehousing, that exists in the community. And I guess I would be interested in seeing, and especially now with the approval of eight warehouses in our industrial park that will be developed over the next decade, supposedly, I guess I would like to see some occupancy of those facilities before moving forward with approving additional warehousing in the community. In visiting last Thursday with the city manager of South Elgin, he says that the real demand that exists for industrial development, and manufacturing in particular, would be smaller warehousing. In other words, where a self-contained warehouse, maybe upwards of 40,000 square feet, that that's really where the demand is. And that was his assessment, and that's what, in his role with the city of South Elgin, is saying that that's where their focus seems to be, and that that's where the opportunities really lie into the future. Now, I don't know anything about real estate, but I'm talking to someone that's engaged with this side of the politics and the development issue in their community. And I don't think South Elgin, which is about 25,000, is much different than Geneva in size, and its proximity to the river, and through traffic with 31, and, excuse me, with Route 25. So getting back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I guess, one of my concerns is when we disregard the directive, or the input from our Planning and Zoning Commission, I guess, as I observe those people, and as I talk to some of those people, they sort of wonder what their role really is. And I know that as we look at filling vacancies with historic preservation, as we look at a lot of the commissions and volunteer services that the public provides to the community, it becomes difficult to find people that want to give up their time, do the homework involved with the plethora, the massive amount of work that goes into especially planning and zoning, to study these materials, and then come before the public, address questions, and then make a recommendation to our community. And I think that when we disregard their input, and that we know better without really seriously weighing what they have to contribute, I think it makes it more and more difficult to find people that are capable, qualified, hardworking, dedicated people to come forward and to provide those voluntary services to the city. So with that, I'll yield my time.
Before I recognize Alder Person Bowring a second time, does anyone else who has not yet spoken wish to speak? Alder Person Bowring.
So I know that this came up in a number of correspondences that I had with members of the public, and now it's been brought up by my fellow Alder Person, and I wanted to note that I'm very grateful and appreciative for all of the extremely thorough work that the PZC commissioners, sorry, it's very redundant, that the Planning and Zoning Commissioners do. I will note, I found I strongly disagreed with a number of their conclusions on this project. I'll start off by saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for a staff report on a number of issues related to land use, regional planning, warehousing in specific, light industrial, how other communities are dealing with issues like this. They got that report, and then, as far as I could tell, did not seem to really take any of the information conveyed in that into their deliberation. Questions about commercial viability were asked and answered, even though that's not appropriate. Questions about housing viability, sorry, commercial viability in this area were asked and answered. Questions about housing viability were also addressed. And then, you know, the PZC seemed to me to dislike the project based on concerns about the size and the location of it, and they had to be advised on numerous occasions by our legal counsel that that was not an adequate or legal grounds to object to it. And yet, I did not hear them bring forward other arguments against making a comprehensive map amendment change. You know, I did not hear them go through and find standards brought forward by city staff that they felt that this project was in conflict with as a reason to object to the change. So those are the findings of fact that we still have. They were offered the opportunity to amend those, and they largely did not. So when I was reviewing this material, and the PZC packet, and watching all of those meetings, I found that I did not agree with their conclusions, and I will say that I think that that is part of my job, is to take seriously the counsel provided by our advising commissions, and then to make my own decision based on all of the available information. I don't think that's a mark of disrespect, I think it's an indication that I am pursuing this with intellectual honesty and respecting them to come to their own conclusions, which I may not share. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alder Person Swanson, unless someone who has not yet spoken wishes to do so on item two B. Alder Person Swanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in response to Alder Person Bowring, I did the same process, went and watched every meeting, went through the packet, came up with a completely different conclusion than you did. I thought the PZC commissioners were spot on, I thought they asked excellent questions. I thought it was interesting that their vote actually, instead of four to three a year ago, was four to one this time, so actually, a couple people flipped. So that was interesting to me, I thought that they did a fabulous job, and to not support them, I think we have to have good reason to not do so. I guess the overriding thing, we talk about this being industrial one, and the elephant in the room is, it's not just industrial one, it's a 719,000-square-foot warehouse that's huge, and it's being approved or debated right now on top of 2.5 million square feet that were approved two weeks ago. And I guess the residents on the east side of Geneva are just tired of it. They would like to see a pause, and wonder when it's going to end. And anytime you walk down Kirk Road, which I do, I have to restart my podcast after I'm done on Kirk, because I can't hear it, because it is a loud street, and it's only going to get worse. I've heard arguments, we're not going to stop the truck traffic. However, we're guaranteeing that all those trucks are going to start and stop their day in Geneva. So we are moving them to our city. So I think it makes sense to me to ask for a pause here, and see what happens with the 2.5 million square feet, not pile on and add another 720,000, and then five, 10 years, say, what are we going to do about it? So I side with the residents on the east side of Geneva, I think they're right, they're seeing the landscape around them deteriorate, and they would like to see us doing something about it, so, for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Person Kilburg?
I just want to take a moment to thank the number of residents, probably somewhere close to 100 residents, that took the time to communicate in regard to this project and expressing their opinions. And I think there was one in support, and the rest were in opposition, too. So you might disregard their opinion, that, again, you might consider their reaction to this type of development is emotional, but they have a stake in the community, they're property owners, they pay property taxes, they live in the immediate area, and they have an opinion. You may agree with it, or you may disagree with it, but the thing is, I want to let you know that I respect your contribution to the process, voicing your opinion, and surprisingly, I didn't get any, except the one, email in support of this project from the community. So that's usually the way it is, people are opposed to a project, and they'll let you know it, if they're supportive of it, they'll sit on their hands, and they won't communicate their support. But I did think it was odd that the rest of Geneva had no reaction to this project. And as a result, those that did take the time to draft an email and communicate with us, I want you to know that I'm thankful, and again, appreciate your time and effort.
Anyone else on the dais? Alder Person Mayor? Oh, forgive me, Alder Person Ruby, excuse me? Sorry about that, guys.
Thank you, I'd like to echo Alder Person Kilburg's statements, and I just want to share some comment that I got from a resident of, she doesn't say where, we got a lot of Kirkwood residents, I thought maybe this might be, but she, this person reached out to all of us, and shared her opposition to the project, and then wrote to me and said that one of the replies she got, she said, honestly, one of those responses left me stunned. It gave me the impression that sacrificing the health, welfare, quality of life, property values of residents near the proposed development is a small price to pay for increasing city revenue for future unknown or yet to materialize needs or enhancements to other parts of Geneva. I'm bewildered that the council would even consider the virtual destruction of neighborhoods along Kirk Road and further west in our ward. And it gets worse after that, but I just want you to be aware of how real this is to many of our residents, and to our community as a whole. It just hits some of us a lot harder than others. Just wanted to share that, thank you.
Alder Person Mayor?
I don't disagree with you that it hits people differently, and that some people are taking this really very serious beyond what may even be healthy to consider. I agree that, you know, truck traffic creates pollution right now, and so does car traffic, and so does train traffic. There's national legislation being passed to help that. This road is busy right now, it is very busy right now. It is not going to be less busy because we don't pass this, it may be a little more busy, but mostly to the south. I think many times during the meetings, which we all watch, I think everybody on this council watches the meetings, I think it's pretty offensive that some people are saying that we don't, or insinuating that we don't watch meetings. Everybody that I've talked to on this council has a very thorough understanding of this project and of the strategic plan, and I've seen all the emails, I've read them all, I've considered this backwards and forwards, and there is not, like, I drove around the suburbs today quite extensively, and, I mean, South Elgin has some of the biggest warehouses in the area, like huge warehouses that are not at, don't have 30% land area around them, they have, they are very tightly fitted onto sites. And all the other communities around us have this. Our strategic plan has asked us to diversify the tax base year after year after year. This site has sat vacant for many, many years, and I understand that Dean wants to wait another project to get this done. But my problem-
I was about to, yes, let's refer A as Alder Person Kilburg, B, let's not call into question anyone else's position, just for clarity and consistency.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, sorry for that. Alder Person Kilburg?
Apology, sir.
So, to me, the thing that bothers me most about this site is the fact that people coming in and out of Strikers, and people dropping their kids off, do not have a proper traffic light at this intersection. And when it's raining at night, and you go to Strikers to drop off your kid, when you go to Rook's, or you go to the ICE arena, and you have to pull out onto Kirk, there's no signal. This puts the signal in, it gives us property that's been developed without any strain on our school district, it gives us property that's been developed with, I mean, the planting and the landscape plan are way better than anything in surrounding communities for industrial development. We're going to get a 1,000-foot-long building that is 500 feet wide, that has high clearance, and can be used by anybody. It doesn't have to just be warehouse, it can also be warehouse, but there's many users that need this kind of space, and I think during all the meetings, they called out a few possible users. Will it be a logistics hub? Well, there's a logistics hub across the street in Batavia, and Batavia's going to get paid about $600,000, $800,000 a year, I imagine, in property tax revenue from that. So why should we wait until some lesser project comes along and not have the tax base inserted, injected into Geneva's school district, basically, because that's really what most of our taxes go to cover? Why wouldn't we do this? It improves what is a dangerous interchange right there, and I think has minimal impact on the surrounding area. I don't think that the through road that is shown in the strategic plan is probably desired by the residential property that's north of it. I think that this is all going to be industrial, and we should seize the opportunity now because it's not going to change. Thank you.
Thank you. We're on item two B, folks, anyone else wish to comment on item two B? This is perhaps superfluous, all of you received the same emails, we all received the same emails, I would assume that perhaps some of the other council members received more. I received a total of 42, and I certainly echo Alder Person Kilburg's comments, that we always appreciate the passionate, the direct, the honest correspondence. I do want to say one thing, however, that, to borrow a phrase from Alder Person Swanson, the elephant in the room, I do want to comment respectfully, of course, with regard to other issues that have presented themselves to Geneva that all of us were witness to, whether you were on the council or watched the council proceedings. We have received correspondence, and correspondence had been posted on social media citing such things as, if this is approved, then our professional staff get a bonus. Total bull. Here's one for you. If people want to work at these, let's use the phrase warehouses, the likelihood that these children and adults move into our community will likely cost us more money because those children aren't nearly as bright. That's a fact. We received similar commentary, that all of you know, on various other development opportunities in this community. If we are to, quote, "wait respectfully" for other sites to be filled, then we, as a council, should send a signal to all retail developers that until the other sites are already taken, there's one on State Street, there's- there's one on State Street, there's one down south on Third, there's a couple more over there, we will not approve any more retail. Same with restaurants. We have a vacancy right down here on Second Street. No more restaurant should be approved, because the vacancy has to be filled first. Again, respectfully. Anyone else? We have a motion, we have a second. City Clerk Kelly, please take the roll. No.
All right. Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Nay.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
The motion, item two B, has been approved with six aye votes, three nay votes. We move on to item two C. Consider ordinance number 2024-24 granting a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel number 1212-071 from the RR Rural Single Family Residential District to the I1 light, excuse me, L1 Light Industrial District upon annexation. Is there a motion to put this on the floor? Motion by Marx, seconded by Kass, or is that?
It was Pashke.
Pashke? He deferred. Okay. Floor's open for, for the council. Questions for either Mr. DeGroot and/or the applicant. Alder Person Kilburg?
David, could you summarize the, the pertinent or germane points from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting as related to the, the zoning change?
They were consistent in their votes with the comprehensive plan, so they shared similar concerns about not, not going to industrial at this time, and holding out, and seeing if there was more demand for commercial in the future, or other types of uses.
Was that pretty unanimous within the Planning and Zoning Commission as related to that specific point?
The vote was four to one. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais on item two C? City Clerk, City Clerk Kelly, please take the roll. This is item two C, members of the council.
Are you voting, calling the questions first?
No, I beat him to the punch, it's a friendly, I heard you, let's take the vote.
All right. Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Five affirmative votes?
Six.
Excuse me, six affirmative votes, three nay votes. Item two C has been approved by this council. Item two D, as in David, nothing personal. Consider resolution number 2024-65 granting site plan approval for a 719,200 square foot industrial building and ancillary site improvements. Motion by Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Bowring. Comments from the council for either the developer and/or our community development director. Alder Person Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and council will tell me if this is an inappropriate question, but for the developer, if, if you could approach the, the dais. This is a speculative building, right? You do not have a tenant.
That's correct.
So it's not, I, I know it's not a cross-dock facility, so I don't think it's going to generate nearly the traffic that a cross-dock facility would be, but there are a lot of docks in there.
Yes.
Will that be built with all those doors, or will a tenant say, we don't need all of these, and...
We will not build all the doors up front. We'll, we'll look for a tenant, depending on what the tenant needs, we'll put those in.
Great.
It has the ability to, to add those, but I, I don't think in the long run it will.
Okay, thank you.
That's your only question?
Alder Person Kassarog, do you still want Mr. DeGroot to stay?
Yes, please.
Don't go anywhere.
Thought I'd get away.
I wanted to see, one of, one of the things we heard a lot was about the empty warehouse space, not, I'm not referring to anything else but yours here, but let, you're building it on spec. You kind of already started answering my question there, saying you're not building all the doors. So it's built to spec, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be customized in the long run, right? When you find a tenant, you'll talk to the tenant.
Yeah, I can explain our business a little bit, I mean...
Sure.
The building can be divided, and for two users, you know, we can divide it, so we can have two users. Normally, we'll, we'll build a small, you know, office area, just to show them what it would look like, the quality of it, but then they'll, they'll design their own office. They need a certain amount of power, so we'll bring more power for them. It might be a light manufacturer, they could be a warehouse company, this building's very flexible. We just built a similar-sized building in Huntley, a 750,000 square foot building there. We just leased 60% of it to San Filippo, they're in Elgin, and they couldn't find a building in Elgin that they could use of the size, and we were right down the street, and they leased, you know, 60% of our building. So we're, you know, we, we, as a developer, build larger buildings. We, we feel that a lot of people can build smaller buildings, and they're very competitive, 100,000, 200,000, 300,000, but the Chicago is the second-largest industrial market in the country. It's the most vibrant industrial market in the country right now. And so we, we look at it and say that when our building gets delivered in another 18 months, it takes 12 to 15 months to build one of these buildings, that by that time, the buildings that you're currently looking at that are vacant in the market will be leased. And that's the dynamic of the Chicago market. So, you know, we feel that, very comfortable that we'd find a tenant for this building that would be appropriate.
So can you give us a little timeline on when you might break ground, when that spec building might be completed, and then, really what I'm trying to get at is where, after that, you know, how long might it sit, I guess?
Hopefully for no, no more.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So realistically, the next step for us, assuming you approve it, is to go and forward with getting permits, and getting our permit drawings in, and getting the permits, and working with staff, and obviously, colors, the design, you know, of the, of the actual building itself, and getting the permits for construction, as earthwork and everything else. That will take several months. We can't break ground on a building in the fall. You can't strip the top soil, because, you know, it will, it'll snow, and it'll ruin all the good clay underneath. So we'll probably would break ground in March or April of next year, and it's a 12 to 15 month build. So you're looking at, you know, the earliest would be the, you know, December of '25, and more than likely, it would be the spring of '26. So next year's '25, right, so '25, and the '25, '26. Builder, I get that's tougher to figure out. But it, but you, and by that time, the buildings that you're concerned about will be leased. You know, there's just enough demand. I mean, if you look at DuPage County, you look at Kane County, you know, we're the largest builder in Kane County of industrial buildings in the last three years, you know, in, in all of it in Huntley, actually, but very good community, and I think they would speak highly of what we've done there. But when you look at it, we can't start a spec building, it would take 15 or 18 months, and look at what's there today, and assume that's what we're going to compete, be competing with. We might be competing with the new product that's getting built here, but our building, we think, is unique. It's got great visibility, it's a great site plan, it's, you know, it's just, it's just a really great opportunity for us to build in this community. So we, we don't see the competition that was mentioned as being viable.
All right, great. That answered my questions. Nothing more for you, but I probably should have brought this up when we were on B, but I just want to address briefly that I feel like I've been through that same journey that Alderman Kilburg and Alderman Swanson here, where maybe we should wait. You know, we did see that, I, I think, a little bit of success in that with the Amazon site, and what it turned into later. But as I thought about this, and waiting, this, to me, is the project that we would be waiting for. I think it's clear, and you cannot argue that this is going to be an industrial area. I, I just don't even understand what commercial would be successful in the middle of a bunch of industrial buildings, and it's not just the city of Geneva, it's, it's every town around us. But then, when you look at the quality of the product, the quality of the company behind it, the fact that they're not asking for any incentives, the fact that they're improving some of our public services in the areas, it, they do beautiful buildings. I'm sure we've all gone on their site and looked at, at the other projects that they've done. This is not a crappy old warehouse building on the side of the road that I think a lot of the emails were implying that it was going to be. This is a beautiful building that you wouldn't know what's happening on the inside, just based on what's happening, what it looks like on the outside. I think the site plan is, is generous, and, you know, I just think this is what we would wait for, and we would be passing up a great opportunity if the sit-and-wait plan was executed here. So that's why I'm in favor. Thank you.
On item two D from the dais, Alder Person Kilburg?
To the developers, what, are you planning, and again, this is a question I've asked of other developers as it relates to warehousing. Do you plan to incorporate anything for employee safety in the, at the, with this, you know, climate change, and with the number of tornadoes that we witnessed this past year? Are you looking at it?
Apologies, that is, I, I was probably short-sighted with some of Alder Person Kassarog's questioning. Remember what's in front of us, it's a site plan approval. It's not what's being built in there, what OSHA regulations, what environmental things they're doing, whether they're putting windmills, or screen, screens to capture photo, the sun, none of that is relevant. It's a site plan.
I'll answer any other question you have.
I don't have it.
Okay. But we're looking forward to building a very nice building here in Geneva. Thank you.
From the dais. City Clerk Kelly, will you kindly take the roll call?
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Bowring?
Aye.
With a vote of six in the affirmative, three in the negative, item two D has been approved by this council. We jump to public comment, we invite anyone joining us this evening to provide comments to the council. This is your chance to speak, our chance to listen. The podium is open. From the dais, any new business? Dare I entertain a motion to adjourn the suspicion? No, I should not.
We have a closed session.
Correct, that's true, forgive me. Entertain a motion to go into closed session for the matter of litigation. There's a motion, there's a second. Voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll just take a moment, folks.
No action being...
No actions being taken tonight regarding our closed-session discussion. The microphones are going to be turned off, we'll turn the cameras off as well. We are back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. Before I entertain any new, additional new business, or any new business, I do want to make a closing statement. Oh, yeah, motion to return, forgive me, good lord. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Kassarog, roll call, please, to return to open session.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarog?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
We're back in open session, forgive me for the snafu. Anyone new business? Otherwise, I want to make the statement on camera, because I want to say to each and every one of you, that when, and, not, not if, but when I fail, and when I screw up, I invite you to call me out on that. Personal privilege, whatever the case might be. I try to do my level best, I, I try my very hardest, and I know all of you do as well during the committee of the whole meetings. Granted, it's not easy, sometimes we all make mistakes, but please, don't ever hesitate to say, wait a minute, Burns, wait a minute, explain this to me. And I'm more than happy to do so, and I'll turn to the city attorney, or stand back or Dawkins, so just wanted to make that clear. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Kassarog, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks, the microphones are off.